Hey, good evening. We're gonna start in about two minutes, but we found a lovely pair of glasses which I really wanna keep. They're kind of orange and burgundy.
Okay. Program is yours, but if you wanna get started. Just tell me when you're ready. Seven oh five? I think we should get started. Um, okay. So, I, I, I know like how this room feels. My name is Andy Corren. I'm one of the rabbis here at Temple Emmanuel. And when things start to get quiet is when everybody expects that we're gonna get started. And what I've been told is that we're still waiting for a few people who are on their way right now. So let's do this. You're sitting next to people, probably some of the people that you've known already, and if you wanna have some conversations right now, we're still gonna wait a couple minutes before we get started. So, talk to one another and we'll begin in a few minutes. How's that sound? And I'm gonna walk away from the podium so you don't think that I'm about to say something profound yet.
I just wanted to apologize, we're missing three candidates, but we're gonna go on anyway. Okay? They've been called, reminded, emailed, text, all sorts of things. So, thank you very much. And here, I'll, I'll turn it over to...
So, good evening. Welcome tonight to Temple Emmanuel, to this evening's Candidates Forum. It's really an honor for us to host this. Can we start off with a round of applause? For those who organize. Our congregation sees it as part of our civic duty to hold gatherings such as these. When this building was built and then dedicated in, in 2002, one of the things that we, and I wasn't here at the time, but I, I joined this congregation shortly afterwards, and it was, you know, I learned very quickly that, that we really see this as one of our highest callings. Whatever we can do to increase information, to shed light on key issues, especially issues very close to home, and to introduce our community and the broader community to those seeking to lead our city and our state and our nation forward, sign us up for it. And we're really glad to be here on behalf of issues related to our city. Somebody said, you know, "We're here in District Four. Why is this for all the candidates?" And that again proves the point, which is that we hope people from all over the city of Greensboro have joined us this evening so that they can learn more about the candidates who are running to lead this very, very special and holy part of what we call the Southern Slice of Heaven, AKA Greensboro, North Carolina. Friends, we're meeting here, and all I have to do is say today's date, on September 11th of 2025. So I'm gonna ask that we take a moment of silence in recognition of this auspicious day. I also know that there is so much in the headlines, please don't ask me to name everything, but I think it's important that we also just take a deep breath and a moment of silence in recognition of the world that we're in. Thank you all so very much. We're grateful to tonight's organizers, to all the candidates, and you are going to be introduced to so many people shortly. Hopefully you brought pads of paper and pencils so that you can take notes. And it's without any further delay that I'm now gonna ask that Catherine Magid come forward to introduce our format this evening. Catherine is a lifelong member of Temple Emmanuel. She's also been a fierce champion of voter registration and voter participation. Please join me in welcoming her and express gratitude to her and to all, again, who made tonight possible.
Good evening. I really apologize for the delay. So, welcome to the AAUW and Temple Emmanuel Social Action Committee District Forum. Thank you so much for coming. This year, Temple Emmanuel Social Action Committee has partnered again with the Carolina Peacemaker for Coverage and AAUW, the American Association of University Women, to bring this nonpartisan district forum, covering all five races. This is being recorded and livestreamed on Facebook. You can find it at TE Greensboro, and will remain on the Facebook through the election period, if you want to share it with someone. It's also going to be on YouTube. So let's meet the candidates. We've lost a few that aren't, regrettably are not here. The first one, regrettably, is the Honorable Zach Matheny, who had to be out of town and apologizes profusely for not being here. So, in District One, we have the Honorable Sharon Hightower. If you'll stand, that would be lovely. Thank you. And we'll, we'll hold the applause to the very end. And also for District Run, One, Crystal Black. In District Two, we have the Honorable Jim Key, who's going to be a little bit late. His father passed away this week, so he has a few things to contend with. Also in District Two, we have Cecilia Crawford, and we have Monica Walker. Those not attending are Iris Good and Anthony Wesley. In District Three, we have April Parker and Mohammed Basheer, who is not going to be with us tonight. In District Four, we have Steve Ignak, Nikki Smith, and Adam Marshall. We can clap up. Okay? For the district, okay. District Five, the Honorable Tammy Thuram and Jeanette Davidson Meyer. Mayor, thank you. I'd like to specially thanks two of the women who have made this again possible this year, writing the questions, being the timekeepers, and arranging this evening in so many ways. So, they are quite remarkable. So if you'd stand, Heidi Fleischman and Mary Skins. Our moderator tonight, and she'll be coming up in just a few minutes, is Dr. Peggy Brott, a retired clinical psychologist and former executive coach at the Center for Creative Leadership. I just wanted to talk about this particular election. This year, five members of the council will not be coming back in the seats that they have held. And I think Nancy Hoffman is here in District Four, so could we just give a little applause to her? Dr. Goldie Wells in District Two, she will not be running again. Also, the, we lost Yvonne Johnson, a blessed memory, as an at-large candidate. Mary Kay, a booziator, is going to be running, is running for mayor, and so she will no longer be the at-large representative of the council. And the fourth one is, does anybody remember? Oh, the mayor. Mayor Vaughn. Okay? So all five of those people are not going to be on the council. This particular election is really important because fifty percent of the people on the council are being replaced. So please spread the word to everyone. And with that said and done, I will read the rules of the forum, and Dr. Brott will come up here. I'm personally thrilled to have her. So anyhow, the rules of the forum, we have to be official here. The moderator will explain the rules of the for, of the forum, and I'm the assistant moderator, so I'm doing it. The district forum will last ninety minutes. It may run a little bit further, but it's our hope to be finished in ninety minutes. The forum is in this, in the sanctuary, will livestream the event on Temple Emmanuel's Facebook page. The questions have been written by a group of Social Action Committees members and Greensboro residents. There will be no questions stated or submitted by the audience. There will be no opening statement by the candidates. There will be no closing statements by the candidate. The same question will be asked of each of the candidates, and in one instance, it will be two different questions. Two, the candidates will have two minutes for responses. Each candidate has been advised of the topic of the final question in advance, and will have two minutes to answer. The district candidates will come up on the stage and answer the questions. After their segment, we will begin with the next group. The, the, the groups of three, we picked randomly before the forum. The timekeeper will be positioned in the front and center, center of the audience, and will display signs for one minute, thirty seconds, and stop. If the candidates continue to speak after the stop sign is displayed, the moderator will announce, "Your time is up," and the next candidate will, will answer, will ask, be asked the question and move on to the next question. I'd just like to say, because we have a few people missing, there will be some open-seat forums that are, that are going to occur, where there's one person, but we will be asking the questions to that candidate anyway. Thank you so much.
Good evening. It's my pleasure to be here. Now Catherine has written me this lovely script from which I will operate, only now there's gonna be this empty chair, so forgive me if I turn and ask an empty chair a question. I'll do the best I can. How about if we have our candidates from District One come up and join us at the table? And that will be Sharon Hightower and Crystal Black. Hello there. So just look over your shoulder at me. No, I'm kidding. You look at them. All right, let's start off, if we can, with Ms. Hightower. Randleman Road is the main street in your district leading into the city of Greensboro. The appearance of this road is one of the largest concerns as per the South Greensboro Plan. What would you like to see implemented to address this concern? Thank you. Thank you. And now same question to you, Ms. Black. Randleman Road is the main street into your district leading into the city of Greensboro. The appearance of this road is one of the largest concerns as per the South Greensboro Plan. What would you like to see implemented to address this concern? All right, very good. Thank you. Ms. Black, again to you. The record indicates that you have voted in two out of the last five city council municipal elections. Based on your lower participation, have you served the city of Greensboro on a commission or attended the city academy, yes or no? And how can you convince us that you are prepared to serve?
So I spent in line at Allen Middle School, which is, you know, two blocks from where I, I live, and that was not where I was supposed to vote. My voting place had been moved all the way to Stedchfield. So by the time I got to Stedchfield, it was closed. So I missed that voting opportunity. So there've been a couple of life changes as well as other opportunities that kept me from voting. However, I have served on the Southern Voice Commission, which in turn turned into the Sustainability Commission, put some active ideas on the table during that time. Also was the one who ignited the Ad hoc community for African-American disparities of the city. Petitioned for that after a lot of uprising in our city where I thought that we needed spaces to be able to come and have honest dialogue that could grow our communities together. So those two commissions have been what I've been passionate about. I've also spent a lot of time in the Zalaya Plan meetings, not on commission, but I'm sure at the meetings, the commission meetings. So I have been involved in city processes and city government spaces. I hope to be involved more, but my voting record is only, if you go back and you see that I am a voter and have been a voter since I was eighteen years old, my daddy's mortals. But there have also been developments that have been in those every four-year elections.
Thank you. All right, Ms. Hightower. Greensboro needs added housing. We have had a number of requests for rezoning in your district for higher-density developments and have received some pushback, while other districts have, have agreed to increase density. What is your opinion on the increased density versus providing residents with needed housing? Thank you. Ms. Black. The Road to 10,000 Housing Initiative by 2030 is seen as crucial for supporting the city's economic growth and attracting new workforce talent. What are your thoughts about achieving that goal? All right. It's a good one. You wanna hear it? The Road to, but now it's on really loud. The Road to 10,000 Housing Authority by 2030 is seen as crucial for supporting the city's economic growth and... economic growth and for attracting new workforce talent. What are your thoughts on achieving this goal?
I honestly think we probably need more than 10,000 homes, but 10,000 is a good start. But I also think that we need to be mindful about how we're placing those homes and are we providing upward mobility for the people in our city. We can't concentrate areas with specific housing. We have to look at how we are spacing it, how we're offering livability to people in all areas of Greensboro, not just one district, but how are we landing our houses? Are we offering mixed-use housing? Or are we concentrating apartment complexes or an affordable housing in one area? I know in District One, we have within two miles, 500 and something units that have been put in one area. We have to rethink moving that way. When we're talking about talking to developers, we need to talk to them, and we need to have conversations about what Greensboro can look like so that everyone in Greensboro can thrive. Not just one district, but five districts need to thrive. And I think that when we look at areas that need affordable housing, what does that look like? I, I grew up, it, for a little bit of my time, in a duplex. Some people love to have a garden out front. And so everyone does not want to live in apartments, and we need to look at what we can offer that's affordable with varieties and options so that everyone can have upward mobility in Greensboro.
All right. And same question to you, Ms. Hightower. The Road to 10,000 Housing Initiative by 2030 is seen as crucial for supporting the city's economic growth and attracting new workforce talent. What are your thoughts on achieving that goal?
Well, I think the Road to 10,000 is a great idea. Um, and so what I heard this morning, because our Road to 10,000 was based upon a report that said we'd need 32,000 units in five years. Well, I heard this morning we now need about 41,000. So 10,000 are not nearly enough, uh, really, to meet the needs, uh, of the community. Um, I think we have to have more diverse housing, mixed housing, mixed use, mixed income housing as well. Um, because, you know, those are the things that we need to be servicing the people with. Um, when we hear the word affordable housing, I know everybody has a stigma around that. Um, but quite frankly, we need attainable housing, because no matter what you make, you need a roof over your head, and you need somewhere to stay. Um, and I think we also have to look at our Road to 10,000, not just being new homes, but how are we going to rehab and renovate the houses that we currently have here, so that our seniors have a place to stay, our veterans have a place to stay, our young couples, our college students, uh, have a place to, uh, move into as well, because they're going to want those jobs at Toyota and Jet Zero, um, and they're going to need something that they're able to, uh, afford. And so I think we need to look at how we're going to incorporate all types of housing in the Road to 10,000. We use big developers, we need to use small minority developers, because they're right there in the community, ready to build, ready to rehab. And so we have people who are ready to accommodate the capacity and move forward that we need. So I think the Road to 10,000 is the beginning, but we're going to need more.
Thank you. Please join me in giving a round of applause to our District One candidates. And now we'll see, we'll see who's here. District Two candidates. All right, so if we could have up to the podium, please, our three District Two candidates that are here, Ms. Crawford, Mr. Key, and Ms. Walker. Oh, we need perhaps another chair. And do I need a stand?
I don't think there is a stand.
So we'll just change it?
Either that or you could just use that one.
Yeah, we'll just roll it over, because I don't have to hold it. I love a good pivot. All right, let's start this round of questioning, if we may, with Ms. Crawford. The new 65,000 square foot Windsor-Chavas-Nocho Community Complex is being built in your district. Beyond the library and pool, what extended services being offered are you, are most anticipated by your constituents? I can, yeah, a little. This new 65,000 square foot Windsor-Chavas-Nocho Community Complex is being built in your district. Beyond the library and pool, which extended services are being offered that are most anticipated by your constituents?
Uh, so I believe that would be, um, the clinic and healthcare that is coming to Windsor. One of the things that is a problem in a number of communities around this new build or this new, new, um, complex are some of the things that we were talking about, this substandard housing, um, these low-income apartments and homes, uh, that, you know, these conditions actually exacerbate and have very, uh, low health outcomes because of mold and, and a number of other things that people experience in these, um, these lower-income housing. I'm trying to be nice, um, we are in a beautiful, uh, sanctuary, and I want to, I want to, I want to be careful about what I say. Uh, but we have a lot of non-compliant landlords in my community, and this causes health issues. We don't have a lot of places to go to the doctor or clinics that can, uh, help us with, um, uh, urgent care issues. And so I think that is one of the things that I'm really most excited about and one of the things that I hear people are looking forward to. Uh, the other thing is, um, there are some really beautiful additions to this complex, right? An indoor water slide, um, there are basketball courts, there are outdoor rock climbing features across the street at the NoCo Park. Um, there are really beautiful ways to enjoy our community, to be out and, and about and to build solidarity and relationships with the folks that we live near. And I think we really do deserve something this nice in our community. I just want to make sure that as we are building this complex, that we have a plan to make sure that historically, black communities do not get displaced from around this beautiful complex and that we too get to enjoy this beautiful new, new addition to our community.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Key, same question to you. The new 65,000 square foot Windsor-Chavas-Nocho Community Complex, I've had to practice that one a lot, is being built in your district. Beyond the, uh, library and the pool, what extended services being offered are most anticipated by your constituents?
I would think that, uh, health services are one, the one, the most one that is being anticipated by the citizens of being utilized. I, um, I agree with Ms. Crawford, we need more health services in District Two. And I'm glad to say that, uh, there are two previous shopping centers that I helped to redevelop that currently have, uh, health services. One on Phillips Avenue, the Renaissance Shops, and one on, uh, East Collin Boulevard. And there were no health services there until, um, we redeveloped those shopping centers and, and now, uh, the Renaissance Shops, the very beautiful shopping center with health services, and, um, their health care services need also out in the Pyramid Village area, which we're looking at developing as well.
Very good. Ms. Walker, same question to you. The new 65,000 square foot Windsor-Chavas-Nocho Community Complex is being built in your district. Beyond the library and pool, what extended services being offered are most anticipated by your constituents?
I think I'm going to take a different approach to that question. I'm going to say that structures are nice and they matter. My concern is, is that I won't talk about what people are anticipating, because it's going to be stockpiled full of programs and services. And there are many ways in which, uh, many, many of the communities in my district are overindited, uh, inundated with, with servicing to problems. We don't solve problems, we service them. So I could talk about the many things that I heard as I visited the plans, as city leadership were laying those out and presenting those to us, but I'm just not sure, and I won't say that that's an effective plan or the effective nature of what we're developing there. I wish we had put more time into really comprehensive planning and development and really understanding what were the kind of things that we needed to drive into that structure that rather than saw, uh, servicing problems, that were about the elimination of the problems that exist in that community. Anybody who's been paying attention to any of the, the city council meetings know that there has been a cadre of us representing the Unified Neighborhood Council of Southeast Greensboro that have been coming with a plethora of concerns that we have that elevate the conditions and the circumstances of our community, rather than overburdening and adding to the circumstances of, uh, declining conditions in our community. So, so I, I'd rather be thinking about that and, uh, asking that we have been more comprehensive in the planning of what was going to go into, uh, actually the development of the Windsor-Chavas-Nocho structure.
Thank you. Ms. Crawford, a question for you. The recent, the record indicates that you have voted in one out of the last five city council municipal elections. Based on your lower participation, have you served the city of Greensboro in a commission or attended the city academy, yes or no? And how can you convince us that you are ready to serve?
I'm not sure that's correct, um, but I, I'll, I'll leave that. Um, and yes, I currently serve on the Parks and Rec Committee, a commission, um, asking for the $40 million, um, remission of the Belem Park, removing all of the toxic dirt. I don't know if you've paid attention, but, uh, in, you know, District One, um, there is a park, Belem Park, um, that was a landfill, an unregulated landfill, uh, that got a cap and cover that came off during the, the tornado, um, and left open the dirt that was underneath that was slowly poisoning the community around it. We felt at Parks and Rec that that park needed to be fully remediated with the $40 million in the end. That is not what city council went with, uh, and therefore we are left with, um, the, the fact that if we cap and cover half of it and remediate half of it, there's still a half of it that could end up being, uh, an issue again in the near future, and it will cost us probably double of what we could have paid for now. Um, so that's, that's commission. Uh, yes, I did go to City Academy. Dr. Wells was actually the person who recommended that I do that, um, after the last time that I ran against her. Um, she thought that it would be beneficial, uh, knowing that this was what I was going to do again, uh, because we have issues in my community that need to be addressed. And when you go to city council, it's half and half. If you don't have, uh, people who are sitting there feet, both feet on the ground in the community and don't hear from the community regularly, they don't vote in our favor.
Thank you. Mr. Key. In 2022, the highest poverty rate in Guilford County were concentrated in the southern and eastern parts of the county. Across Greensboro, 21.9% of the people live below the federal poverty level. What specific actions or initiatives do you have in mind to reduce this number in your district?
Well, I plan to do more development, bring more houses, more jobs to District Two. That is the solution to poverty, is employing people. When I was on council, the last act that I committed was to extend Collin Boulevard and build the Raff Johnson Way and the bridge across Buffalo Creek, which connected to Neilltown Road. And that opened up a major transportation artery that was clogged in East Greensboro. Now, I plan to extend Collin Boulevard to the urban loop, which will open up 2,000 acres in that area for development, bringing lots of jobs, lots of housing, lots of businesses. And, um, once we do that, then District Two, the, the whole district will change. We'll go from being the worst district in the city to the darling district in the city, because we'll be the gateway to Greensboro, coming in from northeast, from Raleigh, Virginia. Um, so it's going to be fantastic, and we'll, we'll develop this area like Cary, North Carolina. I'm sure you've been to Cary. Cary's a beautiful city, uh, it used to cover when I was in sales down there. And they have controlled aesthetics and controlled growth. We'll do the same. And it won't all look like Cary. Some of it may look like, uh, the flats in Cleveland, some may look like, uh, French Quarters in New Orleans, others may look like Shady Side in Pittsburgh. Um, so it will, it'll be a different flavor, but it will be the gateway into Greensboro from the northeast, and, uh, will be the envy of the city.
Thank you. Ms. Walker, the same question to you. In 2022, the highest poverty rates in Guilford County were concentrated in the southern and eastern parts of the county. Across Greensboro, 21.9% of the people live below the federal poverty level. What specific actions or initiatives do you have in mind to reduce this number in your district?
I think that one of the greatest problems and challenges to solving the issue of poverty in District Two is that we've been fragmented. We don't view the problem as a systemic issue. We're fragmented, we talk about housing on one hand, we talk about health on one hand, we talk about education on another hand, and we talk about those things as if they are separate and apart and isolated, and they're not. Every decision that we've ever made in this city with regard to housing has had an impact on, on education, has had an impact on health. And first and foremost, we need to recognize that, and we need to be approaching these problems, uh, as systemic issues that are connected to one another and not fragmenting and isolating them. That's, that's one of the approaches that we need to make. The other piece is, is that, I attended a school board meeting just last night or the night before, and one of the things that the superintendent reported when asked about circumstances of Title I schools, which are predominantly in, uh, District Two and District One, in the most highly impacted communities, is that those schools are most likely to get the most inexperienced teachers. Why? Largely because we've talked about affordable housing, and even as we talk about mixed-income housing, I can tell you that we're one to analyze, to turn over, and to look at whether or not that's what we've done in District Two. The answer to that question would be no. Likewise, the impact is also on healthcare. I was at a county, I watched the county commission meeting the other night where infant mortality was discussed. And if you want to talk about the devastating statistics that exist in this county around infant mortality, even that is, uh, I, I say tied and connected very intimately to decisions that have been made about housing in our community. So, so we shouldn't isolate, uh, these concerns. If we want to really address and, and, and begin to resolve and to eliminate the circumstances of poverty in District Two, we have to do that comprehensively, and we have to approach it as a larger systemic problem.
Thank you. We're asking this question of all of our candidates. The Road to, and we'll start with Ms. Crawford. The Road to 10,000 Housing Initiative by 2030 is seen as crucial for supporting the city's economic growth and for attracting new workforce talent. What are your thoughts on achieving this goal?
Thank you. Um, so the thing that I do as a job is I'm the program director for American Friends Service Committee.
Like?
Yes, thank you. No, it's fine. Um, so my day job is, uh, the program director for American Friends Service Committee, uh, and we launched something called Keep Gate City House. And, uh, the question about units and how are we keeping people in their houses is very important. Um, one of the things that we found out in Greensboro is that 16,000 households face eviction every year. So you compare that to the number of increase in homelessness, and you start to see, um, that we have an issue around rental unit, units and evictions. So almost 50% of Greensboro are renters, right? And so, uh, we are seeing people paying 30 to 50% of their income, and we are seeing, uh, landlords that are taking advantage and not making the repairs that they need. And so as we're talking about the Road to 10,000 and we want to build 10,000, as long as we continue to see rent go up and units not be taken care of, we are going we are going to lose them faster than we are building them, and we will never make up that ten thousand. There are three things that we can do, and that's, one, is to preserve units by making sure that we tighten up code enforcement and make sure that we are not losing thousands of units at a time so that we can start to make up ground. The second thing is, a lot of students and workforce folks who are workers are not able to buy homes right now because there are no two hundred to two hundred and fifty thousand dollar homes. We've got to tap into housing funds. I saw Stein was talking about that recently in order to to offset the cost of lower lower-priced homes, but also to make sure that we are getting the infrastructure that we need for the building building that we are doing. We cannot put all of the buildings in District One and District Two. They have to go across.
Thank you. Thank you. Your time is up. How about, let's hear now from Mr. Key, same question. The road to ten thousand housing initiative by 2030 is seen as crucial for supporting the city's economic growth and attracting new workforce talent. What are your thoughts on achieving that goal?
Well, it's certainly a grand idea, but we're going to need fifty thousand houses in Greensboro. I serve on the Board of Trustees at A and T, and we had a banner year for applicants. We had fifty-one thousand students apply for this fall semester. So we need fifty thousand beds over A and T. So that's a hundred thousand units in Greensboro that we're going to need over the next few years. And I'm doing my part to help achieve that goal right now as a private citizen. I built a subdivision called Nottingham Forest a few years ago over in northeast Greensboro. We upgraded the neighborhood because Connetboro White made me promise that I'd do so. So we have five hundred thousand dollar houses over in East Greensboro outside of Kings Forest and Woodmill Park. And we have Phase Two that we're starting with eighteen lots available. We're going to do thirty-six duplexes over there, very nice duplexes for the Gen Z generation, so they can have places to live. And on top of that, we're building a hundred and forty-four units off of Sixteenth Street in Cone Boulevard, right behind the Walmart. This property is a twelve-acre property. It, well, again, will have a hundred and forty-four units. It will have a commercial urban farm, so the seniors and veterans will have somewhere to work if they choose to. And we're going to power everything using solar energy. It will be the first net zero project in the United States that has over twenty-five units. So again, I'm doing my part.
Thank you. And Ms. Walker, same question to you. The road to ten thousand housing initiative by 2030 is seen as crucial for supporting the city's economic growth and attracting new workforce talent. What are your thoughts on achieving that goal?
The road to ten thousand anywhere is great. My biggest concern is implementation. Having an idea about the necessity of housing and the need for housing is very different than the way in which you approach comprehensive strategic plan development of that. I live in District Two, and I can tell you that we have created, by decisions that have been made about housing, District One and District Two, six zip codes in this city carry the heaviest burden of affordable housing. Six zip codes out of potentially twenty-eight. We created a housing, a food desert. We created a housing desert. We created a healthcare desert. We created an economic desert. Those things are connected. And what, the the idea of of addressing the need for more housing is a good thing. How you do that is a more critical thing. The equitable distribution of the kind of housing. We've been before the the City Council suggesting that the issues that you mentioned a few minutes ago of density and market rate housing is a critical and a severe need in our community. Housing decisions are impacting the quality of our schools. Housing decisions are impacting the quality of retail. Housing decisions are impacting the circumstances of healthcare. My concern with the road to ten thousand is that while I would fully support it, is that I would want the city and the City Council to be fully invested and at a table looking at the the comprehensive impact. I think we're good people. I think developers are good people. I think realtors are good people. I think planners are good people. I think we all mean well. But it is rather troubling that while we mean well, in certain communities, we keep recreating and adding on and exacerbating the circumstances that are trapping children and families in communities where nothing that's viable and I would say that would lend itself towards prosperity is happening for them. So that would be my concern.
Very good. Thank you. Can you join me in thanking our District Two candidates? Has Mr. Bashir arrived? Catherine, has Mr. Bashir arrived? Okay. So April Parker, Ms. Parker, join us up here. Look, you get the whole table. Welcome, welcome.
This is familiar.
Ms. Parker, given your knowledge of the current approved city budget, what are your thoughts about the amount of dollars being spent in your district? And what do you think should be spent and on what?
Sure. I have no preconceived notions. As a community organizer, I'm very aware of the needs of our entire city. I lived in District One, raising my kid. In District Two, I've worked on MLK. And on District Three, I became a homeowner. I do understand that with the staff in support, I'll be able to understand the complexities of budget and such a scale much larger. But, sorry, y'all. I mean, first of all, you need to vote me in because I'm longer than two minutes. I need more rehearsal on this mic. But I do believe that from being on the campaign trail for all of 2025, District Three is quite aware that we have goodness and we have enough. And we like to have other opportunities spread throughout the community. And so I do want to say District Three, even though we represent homeowners that have been in their homes for decades, and we have people who value education, even though their children have been long, uh, invested. But there there has been a desire or investment in education in particular. And I'm not trying to say that we are going to cut. Education is the City Council's responsibility. I don't think that we're going to be paying for the operational funds, but I think we could get really curious. We share the same populations and we serve them. And so Greensboro voters have already said that they value education and will make the investment because we know businesses are coming. And they're going to be looking for great neighborhoods and great schools. And we need that throughout all of Greensboro. And so District Three is aware that when we're making the investment now in the structures to save safety, traveling to schools on sidewalks. But also, we can share resources. Right now, we can easily champion what we would like as the Guilford Guarantee while we're sharing our city.
All right, thank you. You know, now, one of the disadvantages of being the only one at the table is you get no respite in between questions. Have a sip of water and gear up for the next one. All right, here we go. Homelessness is a problem that the City Council has been trying to address with the purchase of thirty pop-up and collapsed flat temporary housing units known as pallet homes. That was a new term for me. The first winter, 2022, we were able to house sixty residents, seventeen of whom were able to find permanent housing after that. In 2024, the council was able to rent two RV sleeping trailers, and these had showers and toilets, which increased the total number of beds to eighty-seven. And they were able to begin using these units in summer heat. Would you agree to to increase this program? And where would you expect to get the funding?
Sure. Homelessness and housing is complex. Like most problems, if you're if you're not looking at the complexities and examining the root causes, we can have really quick temporary shallow interventions and approaches. And I do think that that leads to temporary and wasteful spending. We have waited over ten years, and that is like on other cities when it comes to permanent housing solutions. So yes, we have to, we have some things that we have to take care of pretty urgently. And there are really good people doing this work. But not one organization or one initiative is going to heal all of these societal ills. But under District Three, I was at an under-tenured budget meeting, and one of the things that our representative said was for the past fifteen years, we have not examined this holistically. And so that was in his tenure, and so we're not sharing data. I think we should get really curious about the homelessness ecosystem so we can be more effective, so we can get to the root of this. So it really, we need to share the data, but also be curious. Where are the breakdowns? Is it mental health? Is it, are people being economically deprived? Is it substance abuse? We don't really have a handle on what exactly, how to effectively approach homelessness. And so I think that that is something that needs to be prioritized so that we can, yeah, work towards reducing the amount of visible and people experiencing homelessness.
Thank you.
I also, I was a part of the, I was a volunteer with Keep Gate City House, and I've also been a part of the coalition work of the Neighborhood Coalition of the South Side. And so I want to lift that up. A lot of wonderful solutions are coming from social justice organizations, and we have a history in our city.
All right.
Continuing that work that I've committed to.
Thank you. All right, your final question, so take a deep breath because you don't get to listen to others answering it. Final question here. The road to ten thousand housing initiative by 2030 is seen as crucial for supporting the city's economic growth and for attracting workforce talent. What are your thoughts on achieving that goal?
Say it again?
Yes. The road to ten thousand housing initiative by 2030 is seen as crucial for supporting the city's economic growth and for attracting workforce talent. What are your thoughts about achieving that?
Sure, I think that we should be trying to retain our best first and foremost. And so I'm excited, y'all, about growing with you all in the city of Greensboro. And I hope that people are excited about singing on the ballot because I have built some trust and credibility across our city. And I plan on developing Greensboro responsibly and ethically. I live in a condo that kind of gives us a nice little snapshot of what is possible in Greensboro. There are, make it multi-generational. I live on Elm Street. We're close to Amity's. I'm right across the street. And so when we talk about live, work, and play, I think that that is an example. And so we do need multi-use, mixed-income, diverse neighborhoods wherever we go. But building with equity in mind is necessary. And equity is a part of our mission statement. It should never be a second thought. And so I really do believe. I've seen other cities, y'all. We can really get prepared right now. All of us should be going into, there's urban planning tools, y'all, that we can start doing right now. We want to be proactive and protective and grow out, where everybody has kind of some say and a process, where we have a whole bunch of designs and architects. And having these local organizations and institutions helping us build the city and being a part of the process. We have one of the biggest engineering schools in the in the country, Aggie Pride, and they should be helping us develop that city, and we deserve to design. And so what I'm asking us to do is if we can come together and have some, where developers can pull from where we retain the characteristics of our neighborhood, we improve the designs, and we're a part of the problem. We don't get what's happening in our communities from the headlines, and I hope to do that with you all.
Okay. All right. And thank you very much. Could you join me in thanking Ms. Walker? All right, now can we see our candidates for District Four? That would be Mr. Nicky Smith, Mr. Steve Ignak, and Mr. Adam Marshall. Good evening, gentlemen. So let's start with you, Mr. Smith.
Yes.
As we attract more young professionals to fill out our booming job market, home and rental costs relative to the per capita income are increasingly important. Property values and tax rates will be increasing this year. What ideas or initiatives do you have in mind to address this?
Well, I think the taxes in Guilford County and the city are combined. You can't look at one without the other one. We've got to look at neutral, not raise it. Just because our taxes have already gone up in the last two years, they can't go up again in this next reassessment of our property. So I think the first part of your question, if I heard, was what are we going to do about taxes? If we continue to burden our homeowners with higher taxes, we're going to run them out of their homes, and we're not going to have people having homes that they've lived and built generational wealth within their community.
Thank you. And Mr. Ignak, I'll ask you the same question. As we attract more young professionals to fill our booming job market, home and rental costs relative to per capita income become increasingly important. Property values and tax rates will be increasing next year. What ideas or initiatives do you have in mind to address this?
It's actually related to, I think, to the road to ten thousand also, because as we fill in the market with more jobs.
I think you're going to need to speak up a little, get a little closer to the mic.
It's better? Okay. So as we fill in the jobs that are coming into our area, we should have a lot more available housing. And we should also look at the areas where we can fill that in. And that would be more of the ADU-type units that I would think for young professionals, to make sure that they can move in and live in a lower income area. Or not just lower income, but we can use it even in our district, where we can have, where the area allows some additional units built or even allow for building in some garage space or other areas where we can have people moving who have not actually yet have a lot of income. Well, okay, that's basically what I was saying, but that was it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And Mr. Marshall, same question. As we attract more young professionals to fill out our booming job market, home and rental costs relative to the per capita income become increasingly important. Property values and tax rates will be increasing next year. What ideas or initiatives do you have in mind to address this?
Sure. Well, first, the county sets our property taxes. They reevaluate the property, and and we can set the tax rate. And we can stay the same. We can go down, or we can go up. So first, the county sets that. One of the things that we can do, we really need to inject additional housing into our our marketplace. If we can increase our tax base, if we have more housing, you know, you just get into simple economics, supply and demand. We don't have enough housing in our community. So prices are too high. Our properties are valued too high. One of the other things that we consider, we've got to start looking at some other sources of revenue. We have a history in Guilford County, a vote account, a quarter cent tax tax rate. We should consider those things. Those are taxes that are paid by everybody spending money in our community. People that are going to the Tanger Center, people that are going to the Coliseum or the GAT. They're spending their dollars here. The tax burden should not just be on the property tax owners in Greensboro.
Thank you very much. Next question goes to Mr. Smith. The record indicates that you have voted in two out of the last five city council municipal elections. Based on your lower participation, have you served the city of Greensboro on a commission or attended the City Academy, yes or no? And how can you convince us that you are prepared to serve?
That's an easy question to answer. I'm a successful business leader here in Greensboro, and for many years, I have not been directly involved in a municipal election because I don't think it's promoted like a general election is during the, every four years. So sometimes I look at a municipal election also, and I look at what choices do I have? And for the last thirty years, we've not had a lot of good. And for the last thirty years, we've not had a lot of good choices for change in our city leadership. And I want to bring change to city leadership. This is the first year we have an opportunity to bring serious change to our leadership.
Thank you. And Mr. Ignak, maybe you should take that hand mic again?
Got it.
There happens to be a high degree of opposition to infill development in District Four. As the representative of District Four and with the city's current need for housing, how would you address this with your constituents?
It would, it would have to be something that we would have to discuss with the constituents. It cannot be something that's in vacuum. So not just that, but we would have to look at maybe an overall planning strategy to look at where it would make sense. We can't just say that we're going to put something in a certain spot unless we have a reason to do so. And not just the reason, but also to, that it's accepted and working together. Because if you put something in an area that nobody wants, it's not going to be used properly. Other than that, it's basically just making sure that the development is in line with the rest of the plan for the city, and it's not going to be something that stands out too much. It has to be matching to what the neighborhood is already, the neighborhood kind of face.
Thank you. And Mr. Marshall, there happens to be a high degree of opposition to infill development in District Four. As a representative of District Four and with the city's current need for housing, how would you address this with your constituents?
I know this is a hot topic. I sat on the zoning commission for six years, and I chaired that commission. I had to stare down a lot of my friends that maybe weren't in favor of a particular plan. But as a councilperson, we're likely to make the best decision for Greensboro as a whole. And that's what I would plan to do. First, most of our development, it's going to be on the fringes. There are very few infill projects that are still left in Greensboro. But those are the ones that bring the most controversy. Density shouldn't be a dirty word. When it's done well, it's great. And it offers opportunities for folks to downsize, stay in their community, stay with their social circle, go to their same church or synagogue. It allows new homeowners to buy into a neighborhood that maybe it's a smaller home, and then they can have some upward mobility in that community. But the main thing to remember is, as a councilperson, I will be somebody that listens. That's how I approach zoning cases. And I will be somebody that works with all sides to try to reach some compromise, some middle ground, and get to a better plan.
Thank you. And our final question goes to all three of you, and we'll start with Mr. Smith. The Road to Ten Thousand Housing Initiative by 2030 is seen as crucial for supporting the city's economic growth and for attracting new workforce talent. What are your thoughts about achieving this goal?
Thank you. I was given two minutes, correct? So we have a tremendous opportunity to grow our community. It's been something, something that we know has come, that will be the greatest advancement to our community in our lifetime. It began with Mr. Jim Melvin a number of years ago, ten years ago, that broke the groundwork to build the development that Toyota Battery Plant is on today. Now we have boom, we have jet zero, we have them investing over $4.7 billion in aerospace manufacturing in Greensboro. Greensboro is standing at the edge of remarkable growth. But, I will say, opportunity alone will not be enough. We must be ready. This means infrastructure, water, sewer, transportation. Can we handle it? This means ensuring the police, the fire, the emergency services are all fully staffed and trained and equipped to make our safe neighborhoods safer. This means working together in an honest and collaborative state with conversations, with schools, with community colleges, with churches and synagogues, with the fire departments, grocery stores, developers and commercial partners, health and human services. Greensboro cannot succeed, if these systems fail and fall behind. We need zoning and permitting and construction approvals that move at the speed of light, without delays. We must give our local builders and contractors and small businesses every chance to be a part of this wave. What I bring is not theory, but experience. With forty-five years, I have worked with partners, vendors, and team members to solve these problems and build businesses and deliver results. I know what it takes to bring stakeholders to the table, to cut through the red tape, and keep business leaders accountable. That's the leadership Greensboro needs and needs to make to sustain inclusive and successful future for Greensboro. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Same question to you, Mr. Ignak. The Road to Ten Thousand Housing Initiative by 2030 is seen as crucial to supporting the city's economic growth and for attracting new workforce talent. What are your thoughts on achieving this goal?
Well, thank you for the question. Thank you for our hosts, neighbors, and fellow candidates. Greensboro has a clear goal, ten thousand new homes by 2030. My focus tonight is simple. How we get there is in a way that feels good on your street and makes sense for your wallet. Idea one is backyard homes done right. So ADU, small backyard cottages or garage apartments are a gentle way to add homes. I'm proposing the ADU 500, 500 new units in twenty-four months. We'll use pre-approved designs, pick one, the one you like, a ten-day permit pledge, small city-backed loans, so regular homeowners can participate, relaxed parking near transit, and free rebates where rents stay at the workforce level. It's neighborhood-friendly growth that can help the family pay the mortgage and keep loved ones close. Secondly, tax incentives that pay for results. We'll do as, earn as you deliver abatement. Open on time, include real affordable homes, meet efficiency standards, your abatement phases in, miss the targets, the abatement doesn't. In short, we budget for key indoors, not just groundbreakings. Help buyers actually win. We'll boost down payment of assistance and aim at infill homes and ADUs so first-time buyers can finally compete with that mysterious, you know, all-buyer cash. So we emphasize attainable housing, appreciate that. My plan adds deadlines and tools, pre-approved ADU plans and permit clocks, so ideas turn into addresses. Want against too much in one place? I agree. That's why incentives are corridor-based and ADUs are spread across every district, steady, block-by-block growth, not tower-town. Why this approach works? It's immediate, starts this year, distributed every district, and measurable, and quarterly scorecards, so everyone can track progress.
Thank you. Thank you. Your time is up. And Mr. Marshall, question goes to you now. The Road to Ten Thousand Housing Initiative by 2030 is seen as crucial for supporting the city's economic growth and for attracting new workforce talent. What are your thoughts about achieving that goal?
Well, I absolutely, absolutely support the Road to Ten Thousand. And like one of the previous candidates said, I don't think it's enough either. But it's a vision, it's a goal, it's something to work for. We need to introduce more products into our city. We need diverse products, innovative products, and we need them in all parts of the city. We need townhomes, condos, apartments. Yes, we need affordable housing, we need attainable housing. We need housing that you can afford with the salary that you make. And so how do we do that? One, we've got to streamline permitting inspections in our technical review process. I've talked to many developers and builders, and they all are consistent in the same thing. It takes too long, and it's inconsistent, and it's too subjective. So we can, that's something that council can work on and fix. We can develop city-owned property. We just did that with the Regency Insight, which put over a hundred units back into our housing stock. We can work with developers to be innovative. We can encourage them to think outside of the box. And we can go ahead and make our investments in our infrastructure to get property ready, to have sites ready for the builds by putting in the infrastructure ahead of time. We can, we can always do grants. We can do programs for first-time homebuyers. There are a lot of things that we can do as council, and that's what I hope to work with all of my council members in doing, to get more housing in Greensboro.
Thank you. And will you please join me in thanking our District Four candidates? And we'll bring up our District Five candidates, Tammy Thurm and Jeanette Davidson-Mayer. Welcome, ladies. Let's start with Ms. Thurm. Greensboro just invested $186 million in its water system, with fifty-two percent of the city's budget allocated to infrastructure. What do you see as the biggest priority in your district's infrastructure?
There's so much going on. District Five is growing rapidly. We're expanding to the west. We're going to be going right up against Colfax. And part of the infrastructure that we're going to have to have is an additional fire station. We have procured the land, we will need to finance that. But as all that growth happens north of the airport, west of the airport, between us and Colfax, we are going to have to have another fire station, and that's very expensive. That's one of the primary things. We have lots of other infrastructure items that we need. We certainly, housing, and that's a whole nother issue that I know we'll talk about later. But we also need the infrastructure as we grow to make sure that we live up to our commitments to the residents to have parks in all areas of the city. District Five has unfortunately been under-invested in the park system. We have quite a bit of area, and as it grows, we will have more, that does not have access to our public parks. And we need to make sure that the quality of life as we grow is good quality of life for citizens everywhere, throughout all the districts. Thank you.
Thank you. And Ms. Davidson-Mayer, same question to you. Greensboro just invested $186 million in its water system, with fifty-two percent of the city's budget allocated to infrastructure. What do you see as the biggest priority in your district's infrastructure? I can't say that word.
Infrastructure, yes. I can tell you that all day and day, we're adding to the great pool of that infrastructure. It's always, always a tedious one to figure out how to make it work. Infrastructure isn't just water. It's sewer, garbage, streets. Our public transportation doesn't quite make it over to all of our areas. We have a lot of people in our district that have a hard time getting to some of the other areas of Greensboro, including downtown, because they don't have the ability to drive or have a vehicle to get them to where they need to go. We have a lot of issues to take care of, but yet we also have a lot of positives to look at in our city as well.
Thank you. Back to you, Ms. Thurm. District Five has the second-largest zoning growth, both residential and commercial, in Greensboro. Given the 2026 city budget is already set, what line item in the budget are you willing to revise in order to address these additional district needs?
It's a great question. I think one of the line items that we have to look at is surrounding the housing issue and housing and development in District Five. We are going to need more and more housing. District Five is also getting some concentrated investment in low-income housing. And we need to make sure that that is not all in one area. So investing in housing of all different kinds throughout the district. So we don't have a concentration, as we do right now in District Five, of great disparity in housing types and in the quality of the housing throughout the district.
Thank you. Same question to you, Ms. Davidson-Mayer. District Five has the second-largest zoning growth, both residential and commercial, in Greensboro. Given that the 2026 city budget is already set, what line item in the budget are you willing to revise in order to address these additional district needs?
Now, I know it was mentioned earlier that yes, the county does set our tax rates, but our city does influence those tax rates. And as long as the city keeps influencing those tax rates to increase, so will the county. I am one of those, and I know the majority of the people in my subdivision are facing harder times to pay their taxes after we have our homes bought and paid for. If we do not decrease our taxes, we will have a higher increase of people that have been moved out of their homes, displacement. We do need to work on that as a line item of where is our money going and how is it being spent to justify the tax increases that have been happening. I also see that we need to work on making sure that the businesses that we currently have in place are being taken care of, that their needs are being met at the C-level, so that we can encourage more living wages, as well as we can encourage more value-added services to come in, as we do have the jet, see where the boom tonic, Honda jet is also expanding, and then as well as adding benefits to the Toyota plant coming in.
Thank you. And our final question to you, Ms. Thurm. The Road to Ten Thousand Housing Initiative by 2030 is seen as crucial for supporting the city's economic growth and attracting new workforce talent. What are your thoughts on achieving that goal?
I think it's not going to happen by accident. We're going to have to be very intentional about it. Looking at the growth from both working with developers as partners, but also what are we as a city going to do to encourage growth, to encourage those houses being built? We know that there are certain pockets of households in certain price ranges that we desperately need, more than others. We need them in all price ranges. But there are some, the starter homes, that we know we need. We've got to work very hard on that. And there are ways for the city to participate in some of that infrastructure. You know, it costs about $40,000 for a developer to tap into our water lines. Well, that's a big nut to crack when you're looking at a house that you would like to sell for $200,000 or $250,000, especially if it's infill. It really shouldn't cost that much. So how can the city participate in that? You know, I'm very proud of the work that we're doing on housing and developing. We've got some great innovative projects. If you haven't had an opportunity, look at Montrose Village in District Five. It's an amazing neighborhood that combines large family houses, small cottages, duplexes, triplexes, all sorts of housing, all in one neighborhood. And that's exactly what we need. Those are the kinds of things that we've got to have more of. And I learned this week, that it took the city eight months to approve that project because it was so unheard of. We need to fix that problem. We've had great feedback that we have solved some of the delays in zoning issues. The next step is to solve the delays in the building and development side.
Thank you very much. And now, Ms. Davidson-Mayer, same question. The Road to Ten Thousand Housing Initiative by 2030 is seen as crucial for supporting the city's economic growth and attracting new workforce talent. What are your thoughts about achieving that goal?
We need to start with, you know, the Sammies have made some very eloquent advice. We do need to do more investing in our homes. We need to have the ability to do infills or to expand beyond. We need to make sure that we have the infrastructure to get there. We also need to make sure that not forty percent or more of our living wages are going to taxes, that it needs to be more towards the thirty to thirty-three percent, so that we can have those living wage jobs actually there living in a home or duplex, mixed housing... jobs actually there to live in a home or duplex, mixed housing, however you want to describe it. We need to make sure that the people have the funds in their pockets to pay for the home in the long run. Oh, gosh, I'm really nervous tonight. So thank you, guys. I appreciate your patience with me. I have a bunch of notes, and I just totally lost track of where I'm at. Everyone has had great ideas here tonight. It's really hard to be the last one up here trying to come up with new ideas that have already been said. So, you know, let's find ways to work together, let's make sure we get all the key players at the table. Several of the meetings I've been having these last couple of weeks, people were really surprised when I said we need to have all the key players at the table, and then when I was asked to define what the key players were, this is where the surprise came in. I said, how many times have we had the schools at the table? How many times have we had the medical establishments at the table? How many times have we had a citizens committee at the table? And I can tell you, I haven't gotten a solid answer on that. And we need to make sure that we have everybody there to make sure we're meeting the needs of each community, each district, and the city as a whole.
Thank you. Join me in thanking our District Five candidates. In Greensboro, I'd say we're in good hands. Let's have another set of applause for all of our candidates that were here tonight.
So I just, I just wanted to close with a huge thank you for Dr. Brat, who sat down over there, the temple staff, and Rabbi Corin, and our former partners, who are partners again, AAUW, and the Social Action Committee. And I, there were just a few candidates in the audience that I wanted to recognize. City Councilwoman Jamila Pender, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I think I saw Mayor Kay Abuziater there as well. Thank you all for coming. We hope that you'll come again at our next event, which is October 16th. We'll be, we'll be having a forum for the mayor and at-large candidates. And also on October 9th, and there's a flyer outside, we were going to have a discussion with two mayors and a former city councilman, Justin Outlane, Mayor Vaughn, and Holliday, to talk about what has happened, you know, what does city, what does city council do, and why should I care and vote? It'll be a fantastic conversation. We've done this four other times, and if you're planning to run, come, you'll learn a lot. Thank you so much for coming tonight. We appreciate it.